January 26, 2022, City Council Meeting. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the rule? Councilmember Kerry?
Present.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Present.
Student Representative Knowles?
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you. And joining us via Zoom is Mayor Whitney. So may I now have, moving on to item two, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Councilmember Kerry?
I move the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda that's laid down before us.
Second? By Mr. Ruffridge. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda? Approval of minutes, January 12, 2022, council meeting minutes, and that is your consent agenda. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Seeing none, seeing, are there, are there any remote attendees wishing to speak? There are none. Having no one else wishing to speak, the approved agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any, excuse me, council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Moving on to item four, presentations with prior notice. We are joined tonight by Shannon Davis, the Executive Director of the Solvatain Chamber of Commerce. You will have 10 minutes, Mrs. Davis. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for having me. It's always my pleasure to be with the council. And as I was putting together this report, I realized that fourth quarter is kind of my favorite time to report on because it gives me a chance to reflect on the entire year that we just went through. So, as I noted in the report that's before you, we did increase our membership by 7%, ending the year with 504 members. We have 20 more community events through the year, 14 member events, and 80 new workshops for our newly rebranded Central Peninsula Young Professionals. We continue to involve and grow our communications. We manage five Facebook pages and two groups with a combined following of 13,600 and over a million post reaches over the year. We also have just under 1,200 subscribers to our weekly news, and we're having a really positive response to the new website that we launched in June, which really rolls me right into my marketing report. I would like to thank you all once again for allowing us to facilitate me an enhanced marketing campaign for Solvatain this summer. I've been compiling campaign impressions, and some of which I have listed in the report. Hey, to you, you did just get back to me today with their numbers, so I don't have them included. I do think it's safe to say that if you lived in the greater Anchorage area, the valley, even up to Fairbanks, you had an impression of Solvatain this summer in one media form or another. In addition to our non-traditional methods, in addition, our non-traditional methods like alaska.org build-out are reaching out-of-state visitors like never before. Solvatain's content on their site has 2,100 page views since it went live in September. And those users doing Solvatain content have a combined 93 hours studying Solvatain on their site. Your, your investment will continue to pay dividends for years. The new photography, the content, and brand recognition for Solvatain has us well positioned going into summer. We broke sales tax records last summer, surpassing 100 million in taxable sales in the third quarter, up an incredible 13% over 2019 numbers. When I build into our hospitality and tourism numbers, I was happy to see those numbers were up at an even higher percentage, 16% over 2019. So many factors need to align for record-breaking tourism years, but all indicators are pointing to 2022 bringing an over-the-top summer for Solvatain. I just mentioned new content in the form of pictures and write-ups online. We also incorporated that content into the 22 visitor guide, along with an updated look. Our big delivery, all of our guides were just delivered yesterday, and the ground bears met us at the visitor center. And there were 22 of them, and we had three pallets of guides in boxes, just like the one you see there. It took them less than half an hour, probably about 20 minutes to download all three of those pallets for us. They were amazing. So I did bring guides for you here tonight. I've got some out in the entryway. It has, as I said, an updated look, and we were also able to incorporate in content into it. We're super excited to have pages focusing on music in the park, open-air matches, craft gear, and of course, the opportunities to eat outside of Solvatain this summer. And that page also has a QR code on it that you can just click, and it brings you to an online interactive map to show you all the places that you can go and eat in Solvatain this summer. Our Instagram and Facebook numbers are continuing to tick up, and engagement has been really fantastic on both platforms. We were thrilled to get a huge boost from Farmer's Travel Guides this year. They named the Kenai Peninsula as one of the best places to go in the United States in 2022. And they are recommending that Americans travel domestically this summer. So Pauline Fromer had a featured spot on Good Morning America, talking about why the Kenai was a great choice for this summer. You really, you can't pay for that kind of PR. But we did work directly with Fromers to provide her with video clips from footage that was shot on the Kenai this summer through working with a marketing company up in Anchorage for the campaign that we, that we helped run for the Kenai Peninsula towards the marketing council. So it's just really a phenomenal fit for us. Okay, so then moving on to the second round of the Holding Our Own Shop Local program. It was even more successful than the first. We didn't get in the program on an entire day early because we went through the entire $310,000 by the morning of December 14. So we had 3,100 shoppers, and about 1,400 of those submitted their receipts online, while over 1,600 came into the visitor center. Right at 1,500 had addresses that were outside the Solvatain city limits, including 87 that were outside of the Kenai Peninsula Borough. We can't thank you enough for funding this program. 66 Solvatain businesses were directly impacted by the program, and the shoppers were absolutely thrilled. So in the third quarter, we also held pie options. We put on our Sparks Solvatain Shark Tank event that awarded a $4,000 business scholarship to Delana Music to grow her online presence and create online music classes for area students, including kids who are going to homeschool. And we also had a really fantastic Christmas in the park. We had an incredible amount of support from the business community, so much so that we were able to bring reindeer to the park this year. And we gave out stockings stuffed with goodies from area businesses. And we also culminated with a beautiful fireworks show. We have an employee at the chamber who moved here from Seward two years ago. She hasn't had to experience the Christmas in the park yet, and she kept explaining that she felt like she was living in a Hallmark movie that night. It was really beautiful. So upcoming, we have our awards luncheon on February 9, and that will be at the Solvatain Sports Center. And we're working on Frozen River Fest that will be on February 19. Did want to mention that we have three new board members this year. We have our first board meeting of the year tomorrow. And we will be welcoming Amanda Gordon with Aspid Hotels, Annette Villa with One State Market, and Steve Mallory with More Preming. And if any of you are ever interested in contacting any of our board members, I'd be happy to provide you with a contact sheet for them. And finally, I would like to thank Stephanie, our city manager, who will be our featured speaker at our upcoming Central Peninsula Young Professionals group. She's been talking about leadership, and that is extremely appropriate. That is my presentation for today, and happy to ask you answering questions.
Thank, thank you, Shannon. Questions? We'll go to Councilmember Kerry.
Always a pleasure to hear from you and to get the information you provide. Do you happen to know, again, with your 600, with your 504 members, where you rate in the state in terms of which, yeah, how large are we compared to others?
I don't think we've surpassed Homer yet. So we are fourth right now in the state of Alaska, but we're working on surpassing Homer.
Okay. Okay, well, you're number one in my book. What I really wanted to discuss with you was the Buy Local program a little bit, and I hope you don't mind, but you have much more knowledge of it than probably any of the rest of us. You mentioned that in the second one, that we were able to assist, but you guys really ran for us. There were 66 businesses that, again, it assisted. You know, what was the number from the earlier, from the first one we did?
I think it was probably maybe 58, actually.
Would you say, and again, and I hope you don't mind if we dialogue a little on this, and I hope it's okay, that 58 versus 66, I heard from people after we did the first one, people loved it, but they, there were some business people said they just didn't know about it before. Would you say that's what limited, we obviously did a better job of people knowing, and, and the public knew more about it. Were there more things we could have done so that more people would have taken advantage of it, do you think?
No, it was just incredibly popular. The first year that we did it, we did do a mailing to every business in Solvatain. We had a list from the city itself. So I think it's possible that some people just didn't realize how popular it would be or how easy it would be to participate in. We made it really, really simple. So I, we did continue to have people sign up through the life of the first program. And the second program, actually, we cut a huge bulk of the people that were signed up immediately. So I think that part of it was word of mouth. Some people paid more attention and realized that it was, it was a very easy program, and that people loved it and were participating in it.
And as you stated, we actually closed, you need to close the day earlier because the funds were gone?
Yeah.
One of the things that we consistently hear that for many businesses, they're right on the line. It's really close in terms of survival or not, okay? And particularly then when we talk about the pandemic, we are very concerned. Would you think it appropriate to say that this program saved some businesses?
I haven't had a conversation, well, actually, I have had a conversation with one business in particular that absolutely said that this, that this program saved their business, particularly last year. And then this year, it was with the continuation of the wonderful support that the city has provided our businesses.
Thank you, and, and possibly there's more than simply one, but again, or those that were so close, but anyways, more. I think I know the answer. There's leading in other things. Would this be a good program for us to continue?
It's a, it's a very popular program. People, people loved it. People love it. If we continued it past this year, which would be a council decision, I would say that you would be starting to get into the realm of something that people would expect to have here.
Okay.
That would be something to keep in mind as you are making those decisions. But it's incredibly popular.
Was this the correct time of year to do it? And so, so looking at the possibility, again, who knows, in the future, maybe a continuation on some level, okay? Obviously, the end of the year with all the holidays going on seemed like the logical time to do it and just want to go better. But are there other times economically where this might actually be more influential on helping people survive? And what I'm particularly interested in is dead winter. If we did something like this in, in a March-April, or again, some other time, is there any other time that you, with your knowledge, and again, you've been with the chamber forever, that it might actually be additionally helpful, I won't say more helpful, but additionally helpful if there were other times in the year when we did this?
Yeah, certainly, the Kenai actually ran a program last year, later in the year. I believe it was in the March timeframe, and they ran it for a few months. I do believe that this program in particular, people have a certain amount of money that they are willing to spend at Christmas time. And this program convinced them to shop in Solvatain rather than spending it online or in another community. We certainly have a lot of people come from all over the peninsula, so I wouldn't necessarily recommend shifting the program to another, to a later timeframe because I think that this is when the businesses need to get that big influx, and that has the push in to get them through till summer.
Excellent. And just one more thing, and I appreciate very much your time and the council's time. Would you see the chamber members, community, that if we were looking for a way to continue this as compared to it simply coming from funds from the city, would, would you imagine that people would be open to a discussion and possibly participation in finding a way to continue this that would not be 100% sourced from the city? Would you see people willing to work on something like that?
I think, I mean, anytime somebody is going to be getting a benefit for their business or to their home pocketbook, they would be willing to have those kinds of discussions. I haven't considered what those might be. But certainly, the chamber is always interested in improving commerce for our communities, so we would be willing to have those discussions with anybody who is interested.
Excellent.
We could, I'm sorry, open it up for other council members to make comment. I can come back to you.
I just wanted to close this one.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I just want to say that one of the things I'm looking into is the idea of grants. Movement government to help do this, but thank you very much, and I thank you.
Thank you for your extensive comments. Other council members, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you very much for the report. I was at the Anchorage Airport last night, very late and very tired, but I did notice through my tired eyes, our logo, the Solvatain logo up there on, on some advertising. So obviously, those things still continue. I just wondered if you could remind me what the staffing is at the Chamber and Visitor Center for all these programs and things you accomplish? What, what kind of staff does that take to do?
Sure, we've got four full-time employees on the Chamber side. One of those is dedicated to the visitor center completely. Then we have a part-time admin person and a very part-time, higher-level accountant and bookkeeper who works maybe about an hour a week, just helping us keep everything very straight. Then in the summertime, we have anywhere from three to five, depending on their hours, visitor center, center attendants that do a phenomenal job taking care of our visitors. And then we also have, the Chamber itself runs a full tab store in River City Full Tabs, and we have two full-time employees there as well.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Mr. Nelson? Other council members, comments, questions? Mr. Chisholm?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the excellent work your staff continue to do with making these events possible for our community. I had the opportunity to go to Sparks Solvatain this year and Christmas in the Park, and both of them were just so much fun, just seeing everyone get out there. And like your staff member said, it really was magical this winter in the park. And it's just, it was great to watch the businesses pitch these amazing ideas and just see the cultivation of entrepreneurship in our community and the support that the Chamber provides our, that business sector, making that possible. So truly, thank you.
Councilmember Hutchings?
So Shannon, what I was wondering is that I know that you had a limit that a business could earn in rebate. So what was that limit, and how many of them managed to hit that limit?
So I probably should have noted that in my report because I can't give you an exact number. I can give you an approximate. Number one, I will say that that was a recommendation that came from the city administration, and I think it was an excellent recommendation because it helps spread those funds out to more businesses. We had probably five businesses that did the cap. And some people were quite upset when they missed their opportunity to get their voucher to their favorite business. But what I noticed was then that made them start browsing the list and looking for other businesses that they might not have normally gone to and get their voucher from those. So it was an excellent suggestion, and.
And the limit, the ceiling was what?
The limit was $15,000.
Very good. All right. Thank you for all your hard work.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, obviously, job well done. I am always amazed by the amount of work that the small group at the Chamber is able to put into one year. Certainly, I appreciate Councilmember Kerry's point about businesses being saved. I think that's a hard thing to quantify, but having heard from many, many businesses, the level of support through that Shop Local program was really life-changing for them. That's a busy time, you know, at the holiday season for many of them anyway. But they, I think, in addition to the stress of trying to meet customers' wants and needs, they felt this sort of community involvement where they were wanting to be involved local. They made it really a point to be local shoppers instead of the online thing, as you mentioned. And so I think that's a really important thing to highlight is, frankly, there was a lot of places I went in as a procrastinating shopper where I was very disappointed in the lack of things to buy. But I think that was to the success of the program being done earlier, so well done. Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Well, if I might, Shannon, amazing work done, done by the Chamber. And while the organization may be number four in membership, I would say in terms of effectiveness and outreach, you guys are, are number one in the state. So I would suspect there are a number of chambers that are envious of the work that you guys are able to do. So thank you so very much to you and, and your staff.
I mean, so will me, and I will certainly share that with the staff who makes all of the process. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. We are now at item five, public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. Use your apps by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your phone. Are there anybody in the audience that would like to testify on anything not on the agenda? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, is there anyone who's raised their hands? I see no raised hands. All right, thank you. Moving on, we have the Assembly and Legislative Report. I see no representatives from the borough or the legislature in attendance. By chance, might they be online? Again, no hands raised. All right, thank you. Moving on, item seven, public hearings. First item is ordinance 2022-001, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,611 in the general fund for forfeited property introduced by the city manager. May I please have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Can we have a report from the administration, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. There, to accompany the ordinance, there are two memos in the packet. The first memo is from our former police chief, Mulark, who identified that we have this $3,611 which have been forfeited and adjudicated by the court system as available to appropriate and use for the city. There's a follow-up memo dated on the 18th of January from interim chief Lieutenant Cant, who re-looked at the intended or the proposed use of these funds and had suggested that we amend that and use them in a slightly different way. So we will be requesting from the administration a potential amendment to the ordinance, specifically just to identify some different intended uses. Lieutenant Cant feels that purchasing magazine pouches, weapons lights, and new mounting systems for our duty pistols would be a more appropriate use of those funds if the council appropriates and accepts them. It doesn't impact the account that the funding would be appropriated into. It's just that we wanted to clearly articulate our, our updated proposed use of those funds. Receiving money that has been forfeited happens at very irregular intervals, but it is our standard practice to bring forward an ordinance and identify intended uses within the police department. So that is consistent with how the administration has approached forfeiture of assets or cash in the past. And with that, I have concluded my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on ordinance 2022-001 is now open. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Any members in the public here in the chambers that would like to testify? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online, any remote attendees? I see no raised hands. Thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before their council. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Nelson?
And as Ms. Queen reported, I'd like to clarify the, the resolution, or I'm sorry, the ordinance based on, on the request from Lieutenant Cant. So I think a motion to amend the third whereas and have that read. The police department would like to utilize those funds to purchase magazine pouches, weapons lights, and mount new sighting systems on the existing duty pistols.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Chisholm. Are there any council comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none. Can we have a call for the motion to amend? Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Thank you. With that, the motion passes with vote 6-0. Are there any additional comments on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, can we please have a vote? Councilmember Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Thank you. Voted 6-0, the ordinance passes. And thank you, Lieutenant Cant, for the work that you did. Moving on to new business. There are no ordinances for introduction. We have one resolution, Resolution 2022-003, directing the city attorney to file an amicus brief in the United Cook Inlet Drift Association and Cook Inlet Fishermen's Fund versus the National Marine Fisheries Service and National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration at all. Introduced by Councilmember Parker and Chilson. Is there a motion to adopt? Councilmember Chilson?
I would move to adopt Resolution 2022-003.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Can we have a report from Councilmember Chilson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll try to be somewhat brief on this. I've had to do a ton of research the last couple of weeks on this because as I'm learning, fisheries are incredibly complex, and it's, it's been a great learning process. But what I would say that I think we all know here is that our fisheries are, they're an essential part of the foundation the Kenai Peninsula economy is built on. And this includes both sport and commercial fisheries. We've had generations of families that have made their livings here on the Kenai Peninsula in this economic sector. And this recent decision by the, by NOAA to close the exclusive economic zone would frankly be devastating to the local fishing families across the Kenai Peninsula. And to really put this in perspective of the impact that this is presenting to our community, the average revenue generated per year from the Cook Inlet Drift fishery averaged about $27 million. And that's really just looking across the last 10 years at ex-vessel take from the fish alone. I mean, that doesn't even really begin to quantify all the additional jobs. even really begin to quantify all the additional jobs and sales that are generated in connection to this industry. And if we look at last year, for example, over half of last year's take was specifically pulled from this EEZ zone they're looking at closing. And of those fishermen, the majority of them are actually local permit holders. And one of the, one of the ideas that I could see being presented and opposition to this is that, you know, why would Soldatna be wanting to jump in on this when we're not a coastal community? We not, we may not be physically located on the coast, but we're part of a broader area. And frankly, we're kind of conjoined with Homer and Kenai on this one. We somewhat share the same economic fate. And what's good for Kenai and Homer is good for Soldatna. We have, we have fisher families that live here in Soldatna, and they go fish in the inlet in the summer. And I think it's important that we, we stand and support these families that are frankly going to be hurting, and they have been hurting for a long time. And this would honestly kind of be the nail in the coffin to what has been a longstanding industry that's just been hurt year after year. Homer has already filed, or decided to file an amicus brief in support of the commercial industry on this, and Kenai has as well. And I think, given our very close economic ties to these communities and how important these families are here, I think it's really important that we take a stand with them and we show our support as a city. And to that end, I really do support this resolution directing our legal team to jump on and support, support this through an amicus brief. And I hope you do as well. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your phone. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to testify? Please come forward, provide your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, good evening. Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Ruffner, member of the council. My name's Robert Ruffner. I'm here tonight working with the Alaska Salmon Alliance, which is, it's a coalition of the processors on the Kenai Peninsula, members of the major gear groups, and cooking our fish, so it's just that everything's different. The organization, organization really focuses kind of on the processing angle of what's happening. So we provide the market, people to buy the fish, and allow this company to go. So I concur wholeheartedly with your staff report that was given, the sponsor.
I'm going to agree.
Report there, I think that really hit us on the head. It's kind of hard to follow up with that, but I guess I could build on the community aspect, because that was one of the things that seemed like we wanted to do. So the Alaska Salmon Alliance is a platinum sponsor for Soldatna Chamber that spoke earlier. And so, you know, we are part of it. We do things beyond, you know, just the economic thing. We participate in the community in a big way. So I really appreciate that you guys brought this up. I did have a chance to speak with your counselor, counselor today, Mr. Chandler. And I wanted to compliment him on the memo that's in the packet because, you know, for a legal use, it was very plain-spoken and very, it's played out very clearly that, you know, anybody can understand kind of what the issues are. There were a couple of things in there that didn't, you know, talk about. Probably weren't exactly correct, and they maybe have material importance to the council. So to cover those, the two things that were in there, one that, or the statement in there that provisionally that the drifters or the plaintiffs in the case, one in Superior Court there, wanted the federal government to take over. And so I want to categorically clear the deck on that, that that's not at all what they were asking for. What they were asking for was that the state that has delegated the authority under Magnuson Stevens Act, follow that overarching law. So, and analogy to that, that meeting more people in the community, I'm more familiar with, it's sort of like the federal clean water act. You know, that's, that's a federal law that provides guidance to the state for D E C et cetera to follow. But D E C has to still follow that federal law. So the lawsuit was that the state wasn't following those standards in management. So that's what they, that's what that case was. It was never asking that the fed state, just follow the existing law, and synergies and management, and introduce some number of years ago. Second point that I just want to clear up as a clarification is that, you know, how might this change management and escapement goal of management? And with, so even following through this with some different language.
If you could wrap it up?
I can, I can wrap this one up real quick. There's some specific language in there that would allow escapement management to continue to happen into the future. So, last point, if I could, I just, the city was not properly consulted, the processing industry was not consulted, our community was not consulted for the last-minute efforts to do something that was completely politically driven and had nothing to do with conservation, had almost nothing to do with allocation. So I will stop there and if there's any questions I have to answer.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ruffner? Mr. Ruffridge?
I mean, so, so many questions. Lots. First, Mr. Ruffner, really appreciate, obviously, your work in this area for many, many years. I would consider you the, maybe the de facto expert on all things fish, right? Can we call you that? No?
I can call a lot worse than that.
Okay, good, yeah. So, maybe, you were trying to explain something, and I sort of half got it, about the part in the brief or in the memo that you wanted to categorically set straight. Could you set that straight for me one more time so it just clicks for sure?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
So, so in the memo, it mentions that, that the plaintiffs in the case, which is D C to the drifters, were interested in having the federal government take over the management.
Right.
And so that's what, what I want to categorically clear the record is that that's not what they were trying to do. They just wanted the state to follow the overarching federal law, not, not for them to take over, but just that the state needed to comply with the federal law.
Understood. And so, right now, so as a result of that, the federal government sort of said, okay, great, and then did take over control of that area. And now, many years down the road, we're sort of in this position as a result of that initial?
Yeah, so I'll try, try to do this as quickly as I can.
Yeah.
It is, it's super complicated.
Yeah.
There are some details there. That's kind of, I think, why you have an attorney to help it sort itself. But what was required of the federal government was for them to pass a fisheries management plan. And that, over the years, has gone through a number of amendments. We're now on amendment number fourteen. And that's the one that we're challenging. We don't think that that had been actually complied with Magnuson Stevens. And they also took this other last-minute effort to actually just close the fishery, rather than to try to comply with that.
Right.
And keep a fishery that's open since state, they said, let's just close it. And so that's the one that, you know, when I said it's just politically driven, it absolutely was. There was no allocation issue, there was no conservation issue, it was strictly a politically driven expedient decision.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that clarification.
Additional comments or questions for Mr. Ruff? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see you again. And, yeah, what a noble person to have on our side. In the past, on efforts like this, we've often found that the people down on the Kenai Peninsula Borough were not supported by people in other parts of the state, particularly the Matsu and on up. And so I'm just wondering, because I'm not knowledgeable about this, is there a support for this in some areas of the state and others, and particularly are there people who are on the side other than the side the Kenai Peninsula Borough's on?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good question. My, my best answer is that it probably, but it's not on the Kenai Peninsula. I mean, it might be some, some conflict with the Matsu, which, which I think that's probably.
Yeah.
But again, it's fairly minor. So the best thing that I can say, you know, for what's on the record is that they're at the last-minute effort when they put this forward, everybody was scrambling to provide public testimony. There were two hundred and twenty-four people that testified, or entities that testified, as I recall. There's only one that testified and supported this. So the vast majority of people were saying, this is just a terrible idea to do this, don't do it. But they went ahead and did it. I had one of those thought that kind of skipped.
Anyway, thank you. I thank you also for your service.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Ruffner? Thank you, sir, for coming tonight and your testimony.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would wish to testify on this? And y'all have three minutes. And please state your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Ma.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Name is Paul Ma. I work with D C, the executive director for a number of years, and do happen in the business, they lock out of it. I very much appreciate this coming with the council. I would encourage you to do that, to look this amicus brief forward. There's lots of really questionable activities that have gone on in development with this current alternative fourteen, excuse me, bend of fourteen, alternative four. But I'll go back to some of the comments that the councilwoman here said. As you look at the Kenai Peninsula Borough, not for a little method of land up there by foliage, it would be an island. They've got to stick together. And so I appreciate your efforts. And, if any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Ma? Seen none. It's nice to see you, and thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience who would like to testify? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Hannah Hattler. I'm in the three eighteen, there are names a lot. But Mr. Ruffner called me this morning, he asked me if I testified, so you're going to have to listen to the first draft. Mr. Chilton pretty well said it all, so I can't, you know, hard that down. I've been this a lot for twenty-four years. And in Kenai, starting nineteen fifty-two, the family lived up here, I'm a local contractor and a cook and a drift fisher. The ladder, which I started in nineteen sixty-three as a kid, and it's still in the neighborhood. And in those fifty-nine years, we've seen losses of fishing time in areas open to fishing. However, we've never witnessed the closure of the management of the rising for this upcoming season. The National Marine Fisheries Service in the North Pacific, which is mainly helping intend to close the exclusive economic zone, an area south of Calvin Island, where I had to make a point, all through the sound fishing. This area is what a drift fleet, ours, is anywhere to compete with seventy-sixty-one or more. The loss of this harvest, realistically, can't be at a later time or in a different era. It's doubtful our Cooperian processors would survive. No processors equals no fish. So we just lost a viable industry that's been around for almost a century. Industry ended up with people who live here, make their families here, shop at local grocery stores, pay taxes, and try to make this community a better place for us to live. And I also mentioned electric work, an electrical contractor, these fish plants, along with some of our best customers. Every year, they're adding, changing, upgrading, repairing, or doing something that involves electricity. And footnote on electricity, one of the operating processors spent almost nine hundred thousand dollars a year, nine hundred thousand dollars last year buying electricity from their local family-owned utilities. If they were to close, that would drop to zero. Processors also hire other businesses for their services. Concrete contractors, plumbers, loggers, hydrologers, mechanics. Let's not forget fishermen who also get paid for their services. Loggers is dumb dollars that are moved to this area with all brand-new money, not used circulating, made brand-new. So all this could disappear if nothing replaces. Loss would have a negative effect on the community, fishermen and processors, gas stations, area, grocery stores, you name it. And C E S of that would also lose their share of the raw fish tanks. It may not be much, but it's always entered the asset following the number of the other companies. So in closing, I would suggest helpful to adopt regulations to the two-two, as well as the three-two.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Any questions? Seen no questions. Thank you again, sir, for your testimony. Our Madam Clerk, is there any remote attendees wishing to speak?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Carey?
As I said the last time this was introduced, I think this is immoral, the idea of the destruction of the people and the culture. And this is what this is aimed at. I strongly oppose it. I'm very pleased that this council is taking the stand. Thank you.
Any additional comments from Councilman Chilton?
One of the common themes we've heard discussed tonight is this idea that, you know, here on the Kenai Peninsula, all of our communities are kind of joined together. Really like the analogy of, if not for this strip of land, we're all on an island together. We share the same fate. And, you know, I think we often like to make jibes at Kenai, but at the end of the day, Kenai is our twin city. And if you look at, you know, the economic structure of that, of that city, I've heard it said that it's kind of like a three-legged stool, where they have their oil industry, which has, you know, kind of been hurting over the last couple of years. And they have the fishing industry. You drive down Bridge Access Road, and you see the processors there. You go down Canary. It's a pretty significant chunk of, of the area there in Kenai. And the last thing I would like to see is, you know, a significant destruction of the economic activity there in that city. Because again, we're, we're on the same raft together, and I don't want to go down. So this is, this is important that we stand together. And I'm glad that we all sound to be in unison on this one. So, thank you.
Additional comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Nelson?
So I definitely agree with a lot of the things that were presented in Mr. Chilton's report, and certainly cannot fathom what the, the economic and the livelihood issues that, that may come into play. I mean, this industry, as, as has been mentioned many times this evening, is very historic to the Kenai Peninsula and very, very important to many, many people. And the economics, whether that be new money or, or recirculated funds, are certainly very good for Soldatna as a very proud place. I think we have as, as kind of a central hub and where a lot of people do come and spend money and contribute tax dollars and all those good things. So definitely, none of those are in dispute. I, I'm going to support this, but I do want to go on the record and just point out some of the negatives that I think is important for us to acknowledge. And, you know, it's, it's not a good thing for us to, to stand silent when it's something this important. I acknowledge that. But, you know, I am concerned a little bit about the precedent of weighing in on, on every piece of legislation that we may not be, you know, experts in. Fisheries politics is a nasty business, and I have absolutely no doubt that this was politically motivated. And as Mr. Carey said, it's not right. So which is why I want to support it. But I also do want to just point out for the record and for the folks that are listening that, you know, us doing this does come with a significant cost. And I'm not going to sit here and put a cost on somebody's livelihood or the economic impacts. I think there's economists that can do that for us. But I think it is something that it's just important for us to, to weigh those things. And I've been struggling with this one, but I certainly think it's the right thing to do. But I think it's something that, that we should do with caution and know that every one of these things that comes up, I think, is weighed very, very carefully by the, by the city and by the administration, by the council. I know I spent an awful lot of time on it. So I just wanted to express that for the record, and we'll be supporting it, but with reservations. And those reservations don't have anything to do with our industry or our citizens or the people that live in our community. But, you know, amicus briefs and some of these things, you know, we don't have any guarantee of what, what results this will happen. You know, will the, will the courts listen to it? I certainly hope they do, but, but it's certainly not of any guarantees. So I'm rambling. But I'll support this. But I did want to bring that into the record in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from councilmembers? Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Yeah, I appreciate you and Yeah, I appreciate you and Councilmember Chilson bringing this forward. I will echo a bit of what Councilmember Nelson is saying, is that fish politics is a nasty business, and it's really hard to understand. And you just see here a person, and again, appreciate you coming, Mr. Ruffner and others testifying. It's really hard for somebody not super engaged in that all the time to understand all the ins and outs of what's happening. I think, for me, it's relatively simple. There's an area in which, you know, the citizens of our Kenai Peninsula Borough and many citizens of our town utilize those areas for their livelihood. A closure of that magnitude has effects that I think we actually probably can't know. I don't think we can know. I don't, we could study it all we want, but if it stays closed all summer, I think we'll be reaping consequences of that for a long time. I think a conservative position would be, and I hear what Councilmember Nelson is saying, you know, we don't want to set a precedent of always weighing in on every option, but a conservative position would say it's not appropriate to make snap decisions like a closure of an entire fishery area overnight, and then, you know, expect people to clean up the mess. A conservative position would continue to work and establish ways for, you know, all parties involved to, you know, maybe equally have terrible results. I don't know. It's one of those things where you just, you know that it's wrong. It's like Councilmember Carey says, it feels wrong, it looks wrong, it smells wrong, it has to be wrong. And so I think it is the duty or responsibility of government bodies to support citizens in, you know, to fight back, to open things that is a livelihood, it's a way of life here. And I appreciate you guys for bringing that forward, and I will support it as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge. Any additional, Councilmember Hutchings?
Well, I too will be supporting this. Being as a fact that I grew up on a fish site on Kalafonsky Beach, I understand, you know, we used to have our arguments with the cannerys, with the fish traps, and the drifters, and the set netters, and the government shutting down for very short periods of time when the fish were running. But the whole point is, is I watched so many families that this was their survival. The kids that came to the cannerys and the processors that earned the money to go to college, you just don't kick the chair out from underneath all of these people. It's just not right. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Seeing no additional comments, I'd like to make a couple of comments. As has been noted, the closure will have a significant impact. And while it will cost the city of Soldatna up to $20,000, I think that amount of money is not as significant as the, if this continues, the impacts and the significant cost it will bring to those commercial fishermen who were impacted. So the other thought I had in reading through the brief from our legal counsel, it doesn't appear oftentimes when you go to make a decision like this, if you're a government entity, and particularly a scientific decision, you bring together the scientists and statistical community to help you look at the issue and help make a decision. You have an ad hoc committee that's formed to help you analyze and look at the situation. And in this instance, it doesn't appear that that happened, that it was made behind closed doors without that input. And I would hope, moving forward, if the judge decides to reverse that, that NIMSA Noah does decide to form an ad hoc committee to help them in analyzing the situation. And my final comments come back to support for all fisheries. Throughout my, I'm a sport fisherman. I'm not a commercial fisherman. I'm a sport fisherman and love to fly fish. But I strongly support the commercial fishermen, the drift fleets, the set netters, who are also very vital to the community, and our sport fisheries. And I would hope at some point that these groups would come together and figure out a way to work together. In order for everybody to survive, we've got to figure out how we're going to work together, not work against each other. So with that, I would call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
With that resolution 2022-003 passes six to nothing. And thank you, Mr. Chilson, for your report. That brings us to item nine, mayor and council reports. I don't know, Mayor Whitney, if you wanted to give a report?
No, I'll hold off until the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. And we have council reports from boards and commissions. We first have the Soldatna Library Advisory Board meeting. Councilmember Carey.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
And I want to mention now, the library board did a meet on January 17th here, and it was really nice that the mayor was in attendance. It was awesome, and I thank him for that. I also want to let the rest of the council know, you do not want to be on this board, okay? This is a really difficult, bad group, mean people, just long meetings with huge detailed encyclopedias to go through. This was the cover, and I know you can't see it very well, but this is what libraries are about. This is, again, teaching our young people our culture, our history, our love of reading, our love of knowledge. And so, again, it was just a wonderful cover for the packet for the meeting. Meeting was real calm and gentle and polite, as they always are. It's just, it's wonderful to go to those, because it was the first time they'd met. They meet quarterly. They did reelect the chair and the vice chair of the board. They looked at policy. We have an extremely, and I'm not saying we didn't before, but we have an extremely conscientious librarian who's been with us for quite a while. And again, looks at all the different aspects of what's going on in the state, as well as even the nation, in terms of libraries, and just makes sure that all the policies, at the same time, making sure that the people of our community, and again, the city certainly is a wonderful community, but we serve a much wider community. And one of the things that I spoke about was, again, this map behind us, and mentioned that at our last council meeting. We talked about maybe, again, the newer map out, and that library is, again, that resource for this huge amount of people all around us, and particularly young people. But also, those individuals who don't have as much income. We may assume that everyone has cell phones and computers and all those wonderful things. That's not so. There are younger couples, younger people, and there's also elder people who financially, that's not a part of what they can afford. And so our library, the Carver Library, provides them a resource where they can come in and use those types of pieces of technology and equipment. They can have access to the world where, for many of us at least, we just, every day, any second, we can get on wherever. And so that part of what our library does and its purpose in our community is to serve those people who would otherwise be unserved. And again, an extremely important thing, access to the world, access to knowledge, access to, again, being connected. They did something also, which obviously we hadn't done before, and I just, I thought it was wonderful, and it's part of my bias, but we approved an American values resolution. And so one of the things that has come out is in terms of, we certainly know if we went back to our founding fathers, and particularly Benjamin Franklin, the importance of libraries, and many of the top philanthropists in this country, they spent a lot of their millions that they were making to make sure that there were libraries in cities. Libraries are part of our value as a country. It's part of our value of respecting each other and wanting to know. And so they actually passed a resolution that had been provided by the Council of the American Library Association, and so that it is now part of our standards that we use. And again, it was just really nice, and I won't read it, but again, it's all those wonderful things. Excuse me, it is many of those wonderful things that America stands for. And again, particularly some of the things I had already mentioned. The friends of the library, every group needs a friend. And again, to have a group of people, and there's dozens of people, who, again, come in and help with all kinds of work, bringing in books, going through books, putting on book sales, and then everything they do, they give to that group. Again, everything, I would love to have a friends group that simply worked to raise attention and raise assistance, and then anything they raise in the way of finances, they just give to you. And again, so that the friends is just a wonderful group. And so it was a wonderful meeting, and again, it continues here. The people who serve on it, again, are a fine group of individuals. Particularly, I want to mention our librarian, our library staff, and the city that supports them. This is an awesome part of who we are as a small town in our great state in this country. And so it was wonderful to be there. And again, I've got the packet, and it was just a real nice meeting, and lots of statistics, if you want statistics, of people coming in and out. And it's been difficult with COVID, but again, we're doing wonderful. And the library has responded to allowing access to the resources even during that time of the worst times of the pandemic. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Thank you for being a friend of the library.
Yeah.
So moving on, we have the Kena River Special Management Area Board meeting. Mr. Carmichael, if you'd come give us that report, please.
My notes are much younger than all of them. At the crystal board meeting last week, we had a very interesting presentation by DOT project manager regarding the people learning the facts, talking about the different phases that will be done, and everything else, creative phase, these phases, and more will be done this morning. Some of the portions that still accounts, and they have a whole, or each phase has up to a million, the bulk of it, and stuff like that, as well. Some of the aspects that maybe aren't directly related to road, other than the bridge that will go over the Gino Creek, up in Canyon, which will cost $100,000 in total. Final completion is estimated at approximately $227,000. Moving towards Mount Florida, bringing up a really big increase in size at the resolution trail. What's good, and it's grand part of the horses, and the RVs, and everything else, the impressive sounding, and the heavy castles, and the mermaids, and the interesting, but not much to be watched, and one of the ones that I'm looking at, and that's the traffic delay that continues, five hundred. And then, that's going to push, basically, build that again, so last road, that doesn't want to be in their shoes. The on path, one of the high points that came through within the government's budget and the state parks, and that's why it all indicated that this birthday of everyone, possibly two full-time year long range, that's been hoped at for, I believe, so the increased spacing, of course, not only living around, but going over, to be on both, and that's been the whole, that's been, and everybody buying, so it's nice to get it, and move out. Got that, very still business, and kind of, self improvement, and that's going on, and all of that, and everything else. Those are the high points. I believe the presentation the gentleman gave after the meeting is on air, still in public web page. Very, very enlightening, because we've been hearing about option this, option that, and government trying to, and land spots, in terms of that. One land spot that did have though, is a land spot or a trailer, or a partial 395 or above, and then, and it's a power next to us, which is totally, you know, probably the same land. So those are pretty exciting, and that's very good with the traffic off the river, yet still have the old state power, and it's entirely, it might be a little quieter in July, I think, inside. I could dodge this, and they're not going to get across the water. In terms of that, so it was actually very informational, and
I can see there's questions for Mr. Carey.
I'm obviously interested in funding. Does the project have all funding, or will it be subject to every year, whether it's federal or state approving funding?
That project is fully funded. It's, I believe, it's an 80/20 split, 80% from the federal government, 20% from the state of Alaska. It would not have broken ground if it had not been funded.
Excellent. Thank you.
So thank you for the presentation, and I will be using the old road once new road gets in, because that's where you go to get, put your boat in, so you can go float down the river and fish. Thank you, Mr. Carmichael, for your report. Moving on, the city managers' report. Mrs. Queen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Quickly, I'll report on a few meetings that we've had since our last council meeting. Mr. Cornelis, our public works director, and Todd Russell, who's our new building official, attended a meeting of the Kenai Peninsula Home Builders Association, and they had a dialogue back and forth about code, some potential code amendments. They also had Q and A. That was a great opportunity. Todd had been in the community previously, then been out of state. Now that he's back in this new role, good opportunity to reconnect with the builder community and let them start to build some relationships and get to know the new building official. Last Thursday, we met with Henry Kroll to talk about their request for the sewer extension. And if the council recalls, last August, you had given us some direction. We had started developing a development agreement, a private agreement, regarding the potential extension of the city sewer main up Whistle Hill to serve those properties. On Thursday, Mr. Kroll indicated that he's now interested in exploring the option of a special assessment district. So we are going to kind of pause the work that had been done regarding that development agreement. We've since then shifted to doing a lot of analysis and code reviews relative to what that project would look like as a potential special assessment district. So Mr. Zarneski, Mr. Cornelis, Mr. Allen, our utility manager, and myself have been kind of retooling on gathering information, and we'll be following up and meeting with the Krolls this week probably to communicate that information about what that project could look like if it went forward as an SAD. We also had a meeting with several folks from ACS. ACS is looking at a pilot project of distributing a high-speed mesh network by co-locating some equipment on city light poles. They've also been in conversation with the city of Kenai. They've also been in conversations with the borough, potentially looking at locating on buildings. And we'd been in discussions, had meetings several times over the last many months. We met again to really kind of drill down on some of the things they're requesting. They're initially looking at maybe 10 light poles, but we're working through some details in what an agreement might look like. Essentially, it would be a lease agreement. They would be paying the city the ability to lease space on our light poles. Heather Kavanaugh is the director of external affairs for ACS. She's really happy to come present to the council. And so we're kind of refining a little bit higher level of detail, some of the questions we have, and we'll work to potentially schedule that presentation here at the council. Any approval of that project and that agreement would be subject to council approval. So we'll try and get her scheduled to potentially talk about the project and communicate a little bit more about it, and then, if there's interest, come back with some more detailed discussions regarding a potential joint use agreement. I also had a meeting with Joe Rizzo from Triumvirate Theater, and I was reminded of this, the discussion earlier about the shop local program. He and I were talking about the phenomenal success of the outdoor musical last summer at Salatna Creek Park, The Little Mermaid, which was grant-funded with CARES Act funds related to the COVID recovery, and starting to brainstorm whether something like that is feasible, how would it be funded, how might that look moving forward? So it was, by all respects, both internally from our staff and from what I've heard from the community, that was a phenomenally successful event, and starting conversations about, do we have the ability as a community to come together and try and figure out a sustainable way to implement that moving forward? So he's going to put together a draft budget that he'll share with me, and I think we'll schedule some follow-up meetings to potentially throw some ideas back and forth, potentially culminating in something that comes back before the council for your consideration. Two other things, our department heads have really been working on finalizing their year-end memos. So they've got department-by-department memos, looking at 2021, the year-end review with listing out their accomplishments. What we're doing is new this year, we're also going to include their 2022 goals. So those memos will all be in your packet at the first February meeting, so your next meeting under my manager.